Education will come to order. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss personnel, legal negotiations, and property acquisition issues. Article 24, Section 4-210A, 1, 5, 8, and 11.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. The board will now enter into executive session.
It even sounded good, didn't it?
Board of Education will reconvene at this time. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Welcome and good evening. Please turn off your cell phones if you haven't done so already. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a couple of introductions. Anna Loughlin, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County is with us this evening. Hello, Anna. Nice to see you. Harold Hiskin, Siskin, excuse me. You've changed into parents. You've lost so much weight, Harold.
Oh, he has.
Harold's the co-president of the St. Mary's County Public Schools Retiree Association. Nice to see you, Harold.
Faith is here.
Faith Abernathy is here this evening. Hello, Faith, back row. Faith is the president of the Collective Education Association of St. Mary's County. Thank you for being with us this evening. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay.
Board reports.
I'm go.
All right, Mrs. Courtney.
Yeah, I went to a celebration of service at the Forest Center, and they recognized people who had volunteered to our community. I'm trying to think. Oh, here are my notes. The objective is to provide understanding and harmony in relationships among the people of St. Mary's County. They had a wonderful breakfast, and they, you can volunteer, it's by appointment only, and I believe it's the commissioners. If you're interested, I do have a phone number that you can call if you want to be on the commission. Also, I would like to, Dr., I mean, Mr. Theo Kramer, he's working on this, is a temporary chair of this commission. I want to recognize the nominees because I think it's important. They did so much work. Ken, Alar, and I hope I don't mispronounce any of these. I went over them, but there was one I was stuck on. Sheila Collins, Colleen Lane, Jenny Heims, Nathaniel Scroggins, Abigail Wild, CACI, which is that corporation, LA Brookbank, Rohan, Cankeria, John Roberts, and I know some of these people, so, anyway. Janice Walthour, we all know Janice, Ricky Chesser, Joan Zimmerman, Randy Walker, Ellen Beurland, Ted and Carolyn DeVal, Larry Crabtree, Kate DeVal, and the last name is Rich Butting Gig, and I know I must be pronouncing that wrong, but I'm making a, I think they should be recognized because they do so much work, that their names need to be heard by somebody. And it's, we're talking about the Greenwell Foundation, the Center for Life Enrichment, the Health Department, Lenartown High School, I'm almost finished, but they have to be, they've put so much into this. The Bay Community Services, Chopticon, Great Mills, the St. Mary's Meditation Center, I could use that one, the NAACP, Lenartown Volunteer Rescue Squad, St. Mary's Riken, the Tuxen Habitat kept coming up over and over again, the Sheriff's Office, and the Greenwell Foundation, I'd like to just say, and we all congratulate these people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby. Mr. Matthews.
I got to go to a beautiful dinner, an event, up at Martin's in Baltimore, Maryland. Dr. Materano was with me, and we had such lovely travel weather to go up and back.
That was horrible.
It was miserable, but that was one of the things. We went up there to celebrate Mr. Sean Snyder as our Teacher of the Year, and I was, I was really surprised with the amount of other people from St. Mary's County that traveled up, and it was just miserable driving up and back, and...
Just took a three-hour tour.
It really was. It really was. But, yep, we got to see Sean Snyder, and he's a math teacher at Lenartown High School, representing St. Mary's County as the Teacher of the Year. I was, he had a great video. Everything was perfect. It was a good evening, other than the driving.
It was, exactly. That's right. Thanks, thanks for going, though.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mrs. Washington.
Thank you. I had the wonderful opportunity to attend many interesting events at school and in the county, as all of the board members do, but I'm going to talk about an extraordinary opportunity that our elementary school students had. They were visited by an international author and illustrator. His name is Henry Cole, and superintendent was there too, and he has written and illustrated six books and has illustrated 60. Mr. Cole's presentation was highly interactive, energetic, and engaging, and let me tell you a little bit about him. He grew up on a dairy farm in Virginia. As a young child, he enjoyed drawing, making greeting cards, and making signs for teachers in school. Mr. Cole started out as a science teacher and used his art skills to emphasize scientific concepts. He didn't have any formal training in art, but his mother was an illustrator, and he learned from her. I can guarantee you, it probably would have been fun to be in his science class because he incorporated art with science. He taught for 15 years at Langley Elementary School in Virginia, and he gave this advice to our students. He said, "For children who want to be illustrators, ask questions, read lots, travel when you can, be outside as much as you can, practice all the time, even doodling is practicing, get interested in different hobbies, and get a pet." The opportunity to create new characters and create feelings and expressions in those characters is what he liked best about illustrating. "The best thing about writing," he said, "is you can do it anywhere, as long as you have pencil and a piece of paper or a laptop." Our students are blessed beyond measure because we have some of the best schools in the county. Citizens in this county value quality education for all students, and we value a variety of learning opportunities inside and outside the classroom. We bring in people like Henry Cole and JB of NFL Today, and many people would never get an opportunity to meet luminaries such as these people. Our students get to meet them up close and personal, and they can ask them any questions, and they answer those questions. These guests inspire, encourage, and motivate our students. They challenge our students to dream big and dream the unimaginable dreams. They let our students know that they can achieve their dreams, and everyone started out as a child. Thanks to Mark Smith, coordinator of special programs and grant writer extraordinaire for providing grant funding, so each child could get one free book. Kelly Hall, Executive Director, she looked surprised, she didn't know I was going to thank her, Executive Director of Elementary Schools in Title I, Early Education Programs, the Judy Center, and Head Start. Whew, that's a lot. PTA at Green, George Washington Carver Elementary School, and Oakville Elementary School, principal and staff at those schools, and St. Mary's County schools are excellent schools with quality teachers, administrators, and support staff, and I am very glad to be a part of it. And I have to say another thing. One of our members, Dr. Jeff Marr, is in the production of Dracula. She's playing the key role. I went to see him Sunday.
So he's in the room, so those who are afraid of...
Watch out for him. He is Dracula's incognito. He was wonderful, and it was just a wonderful play. It was the perfect time in Halloween, and Dracula, support the, it's called Newtown Players, right? Newtown Players on, right across from Linda's Cafe, the old Lexington Park Library, they have wonderful productions there. You don't have to go all the way to New York to see a wonderful play. You can just go and see Dracula is still showing. You can take your children, and you can see one of our staff members. They work hard, they're nice, and they can also...
And they're scary.
Yeah.
They're scary.
Are you scared? You should have seen them, the teeth, the blood, the cape, the satin. Anyway, you did a wonderful job. Thank you. We have such talented people.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
It's nice to see you.
All right, thank you.
It's a good thing the board meeting was on Tuesday this week.
Yes.
Would have given Dr. Marr the opportunity to come in dressed up as Dracula.
Sometimes it's hard to get out a character, you know.
Mrs. Allen.
The schools in St. Mary's County, both middle school and high school, induct students into the various honor societies at different times. A number of the schools choose to induct students in the fall so that the students can participate for the coming year. Others wait until spring and induct new members to begin their service the next school year. So this is the season, and I have attended a number of honor society inductions over the last few weeks. Really enjoyed the speaker at Spring Ridge Middle School, and congratulations to all of the students who have been inducted. It is, it's quite an honor. It is a challenge. It is not just grade point average, but it is service to the community, it is getting recommendations. There's a great deal involved in this day and age in getting into either the National Honor Society or the National Junior Honor Society, so congratulations to the students and to their parents, because it is certainly a family affair to accomplish all that they need to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. I also attended the Human Relations Commission recognition ceremony, and it was a real nice ceremony, and Mrs. Crosby read the names of the people that were recognized. The St. Mary's County Human Relations Commission was established in accordance with the county code, Section 2616. The purpose of this voluntary organization appointed by the county commissioners is to provide understanding and harmony in relationships among the people of St. Mary's County. The St. Mary's County Human Relations Commission supports the American ideal of equality and justice through education and mediation when social frictions and prejudice jeopardize individual human rights granted in this nation's constitution. And I just read that because sometimes, over the years, we forget some of these things, and I just wanted to read it tonight since we attended the gathering the other night to support and recognize people, what this is really all about, and this is something that we need to continue striving for, to make our community and our society a better place to live in for all individuals, not just a select few. And these people work very, very hard.
Initiative.
And I know Dr. Materano attended all kinds of meetings...
Yep.
...involving the Human Relations Commission and other kinds of difficulties that do occur because of misunderstandings that take place in discussions in this great county of ours. So all of us working together for the common goal of making it better for all our kids, which in turn makes it better for our community. Dr. Materano, this leads...
What do you mean?
...to your report as a superintendent of schools.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, board members. And following up on your words about the Human Relations Commission, we have, you've mentioned Mr. Kramer heavily involved in it, as well as Dr. Lacy, so we have two appointments on the actual board, so I'm very pleased with that, as that work continues to connect and collaborate. Board members, I'm going to do something a little different tonight. I'm going to have a little multimedia. I'm going to start my report with a video, and I'm going to end my report with a video, so get comfortable, and in between, I'll have some other information to share. This is a video that we had some technical difficulty transferring, but it was just adorable, from Lenartown Elementary School. I'll let it speak for itself, a group of young people singing a beautiful patriotic song in honor and remembrance of 9/11. And so it's never too late, too early, always appropriate to have a patriotic song at our board meeting, but also out of the mouths of children, and singing these beautiful songs. So our very gifted individual up there with the technology is going to click this on for us. High expectation, sir.
(singing) And by the stars, the very air that we breathe, 'cause the fire still stands for me, and it can't take that way. (singing) I'm happy, I'm a man, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the man we love, who gave that right to me, and the way we stand up next year, and the day that shall remain, 'cause the rain will wash out of this land, the last thing you will say. (singing) From the plains to Minnesota, to the hills and to the sea, the clouds and plains and masses, all the sea and sky are blue, if the joy had gone to you soon, we knew up to the lake, and it's driving me to remember the heart, and it's how we stand safe. (singing) I'm happy, I'm a man, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget...
Feel free to sing along.
...who gave that right to me, and the way we stand up next year, and the day that shall remain, 'cause the rain will wash out of this land, the last thing you will say. (singing) I'm happy, I'm a man, where at least I know I'm free, and I won't forget the man we love, who gave that right to me, and the way we stand up next year, and the day that shall remain, 'cause the rain will wash out of this land, the last thing you will say.
If you're not smiling right now, check your pulse. I mean, that's very wonderful. I just keep that on a constant loop in my office, because we have an expression in our business, in the sense, when you have your toughest days, go visit a kindergarten classroom. They bring the joy back to us in terms of everything that we do, and it was just a beautiful song to start off our report tonight. So let me continue, and I'm going to end with another video that exemplifies the work occurring with our young people in our school system. Also want to let you know that the St. Mary's County Judy Center has been designated as a state model. The Judy Center was subsequently selected by MSD to provide a tour of the Early Childhood Assessment classrooms at Green Holly, the highlight of some of their community outreach efforts to early childhood educator delegation from China. You didn't know this. We had a group of individuals from China here on October 11th. The Early Childhood Center, the Early Childhood Educator Delegation consisted of 12 principals of kindergarten from China. Their goal was to discuss ideas on how to implement quality full-service community schools for children ages 3 to 6, and to improve the management of early childhood institutes and educators in China. They sent a wonderful letter from Irene Ran, the Secretary General, to Ms. Adams, and we were very pleased with that visit. They were so impressed with the quality of work occurring, and we were delighted to have them visit. Want to also congratulate Lyke Milton, many of you know Lyke Milton, she is a teacher at Spring Ridge Middle School, and William Plotner, a teacher at Esperanza Middle School, who have been chosen as recipients of the Simon A. McNeely Honor Award at the annual convention of the Maryland Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Teachers, held on October 19, 2013. The Simon A. McNeely Honor Award is presented to those individuals who have demonstrated active involvement in school and community affairs, along with outstanding teaching and service in the field of physical education. We cleaned up this year in terms of the awards at this annual gathering. My next one is very much associated with that. So we congratulate both Ms. Milton and Mr. Plotner. Also want to congratulate Ms. Patricia Tilson, who is the Physical Education Teacher at Chopticon High School, who has been selected as the 2013 High School Physical Education Teacher of the Year. And we're going to have an opportunity to congratulate all these individuals from that same big, large organization, better known as MAPHERD, in terms of that being the Maryland Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. This prestigious award is given to a teacher who conducts an appropriate physical education program, as reflected in the general accepted standards of practice for physical education, utilizes various teaching methodologies, and plans innovative learning experiences to meet the needs of all students. Ms. Tilson is, received her award at the conference, and I had the opportunity to meet with her recently. She is extremely innovative. We're looking at some online development of courses that she's doing in the arena of disabled students, with all children in her classroom, and modules that she's creating in the classroom, appropriate ways to exercise, and she's just an absolute ball of energy in terms of what she does. This month is also, Peter can't be here this evening, as you know, I conduct a regular television show. We conduct a video on a very low budget with individuals coming into my office for a sit-down chat about particular topics, and my first individual this year was our student board member, to get to know him a little better in the words that he does, and Dr. Asma?
Sorry, Mr....
That's okay.
Since you're going to show this video with Peter, just to let everybody know, Peter has had a soccer playoff game...
Yes.
...this evening, and because the Chopticon High School soccer team is in playoff.
Exactly.
And that's why he's not with us this evening, and I thought this would be the opportunity to say that, since you were going to...
Absolutely. We're not going to show his video tonight. We're going to run that on Channel 96, better known as 88.4. We're not quite used to that in terms of the new cable they've got going on now with the Metrocast adjustments. It's 88.4. We'll continue to communicate that, how, as they go through the conversion at Metrocast, different channel lineup. So his topic was to get to know him, but also, if you recognize, Peter's platform has been focusing on anti-bullying, and October being anti-bullying month, how we promoted that through, we talked a lot about that, and that's constantly running. The other thing is that this is Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week, say that three times fast. Obviously, in terms of awareness for drug, alcohol awareness, as far as education, that's October 23rd through the 31st, and we've asked that our schools engage in some meaningful way to raise their awareness. I'm very concerned, I mean, I'm always asked the question, what keeps me up late at night, and I worry about our 18,000 young people, the safety and the well-being, their quality, their education, and I truly do think about that constantly. I'm very concerned with the issues that we hear in the nation right now with the introduction of new drugs that are always out there for individuals, a drug called Molly that is now picking up popularity. It's a form of ecstasy, but in many ways, I've referred to it as a drug that contains all kinds of things, and depending upon the physiological makeup of an individual, how it interacts with that individual, has led to several deaths of college students, et cetera. And I've watched several videos and read on it, and it's the latest thing that's out there, combined with a lot of other statistics about drugs in our community. We need to raise the awareness constantly, being that it is Red Ribbon Week in that sense, and raising that awareness, it's not just committed to one week, this is something ongoing for our community. I met with the sheriff recently to discuss this further, because some of the statistics that are out there right now about heroin use and some deaths associated in our community of some young people in their 20s that we're hearing, it's very disturbing, very disturbing to us, and so I'm going to, we'll continue to raise the awareness as a total community partnership, but everybody in the community needs to be aware, and I always talk about tuning into young people, parents, community members, so that we are encouraging and directing young people to always down that path of good choices. So as we're raising that awareness in our schools during this bell ringer week, per se, of Red Ribbon Week, I've been very pleased with some of the activities, and many of you know Deputy McMama. Does that ring a bell to you?
Oh, yes.
Better known as Deputy Delogier, but her pseudonym is Deputy McMama because that's her stage name, as her actress role in producing several videos would probably give Dr. Marr a run for his money. Maybe the two of you can collaborate here on something in the near future. But Deputy McMama sent me a video this week of some of the work that's occurred at Margaret Brent around Red Ribbon Week. They really embrace the concept there, and so I've got a two-minute video that I'd like you to see in terms of how they've embraced this concept around the theme of Halloween, too. So appropriate that this week is Halloween. Red Ribbon Week, we've meshed together all of this for your entertainment, so get comfortable again. We started with Proud to be an American, and now we're going to get some entertainment and education about Drug Awareness Week. And watch, this moves, not real fast, but this is a contest of creativity as well, and there's some very creative sayings and slogans and drawings in here, and I love to see that creative energy being displayed, too. So go ahead, without further ado, let's hit it on that one.
(singing) Halloween, Halloween, creepy crawly Halloween, trick-or-treating all in fine October 31st has come. Halloween, Halloween, spooky, spooky Halloween, kids in costumes, watch our sight on Halloween tonight. Big black cats, vampire bats, ghosts and goblins out tonight, causing quite a fright. Halloween, Halloween, painted faces what I've seen, door to door they trick-or-treat for something sweet to eat. Halloween, Halloween, celebrating...
This is good. Don't pop pills.
(singing) Jack-o'-lanterns all aglow, so the ancient stories go. Halloween, Halloween, Celtics started Halloween, they celebrated harvest time with gifts of food and wine. Candles glow, spirits glow, bringing luck and fortune too, this is what they knew. Halloween, Halloween, now they call it Halloween, skulls and bones create the scene, very scary Halloween, Halloween, lots of fun on Halloween, witches fly and children scream tonight on Halloween. Witches fly and children scream, tonight on Halloween.
So, oh, continue. I thought that was it. So you can cut it there. So there's a wonderful example of creativity being led by our SRO at the middle school level. If you tied in all the messages, if you saw all that, the creativity, the door decorating contest, infusing the creativity around Halloween and getting that message out about drugs, and so the total school... And so the total school effort in terms of Red Ribbon Week, this is one example of a high-quality activity of creativity and retention. I'm going to be singing that song all rest of the night, I'm sure, so it made a real poignant point. So board members, on this, the last week of October, lots of things are focused, and we focus on lots of issues as far as awareness. I appreciate the fact that we use certain months to galvanize our efforts, but what we always have to remember is that's just a moment in time. We've got to continue these efforts all through the year, particularly around drug education, anti-bullying, all those issues that are part of how we operate every day. We're going to have some further information as we memorialize and recognize tonight with Mike Wyatt's efforts around safety of young people, awareness, as we further talk about this during recognition. So Dr. Raspah, want to add that little multimedia in with our patriotic video at the beginning, some awareness at the end, and some really good information in between. So once again, very proud to be the superintendent of this outstanding district, and I turn it back to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Materano. Moving down the agenda, recognitions. The first recognition this evening will be the National Red Ribbon Week, Mr. Wyatt, and members of the County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Joined by Sergeant Jerry Johnson and Officer Stone from the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office. And Dr. Materano gave us a great lead-in to where we're at as far as Red Ribbon Week. I'm going to turn the podium over to Sergeant Johnson to talk a little bit about Red Ribbon Week. But as Dr. Materano said, these initiatives are not just a one-time event. We've been doing DARE in our schools for years. And at least we can speak since 2008 a little bit more about the teen driver's safety that we're going to talk about, about the initiative that we started then, and it's sustained every year. So with that, Sergeant Johnson.
You talked about Deputy Mac Mama. I would love to be able to clone her. Unfortunately, Deputy Malloy down there is a very hard worker, but doesn't have any of the showmanship that she does. She's really into it. But with that in mind, Red Ribbon Week begins with a history of how Red Ribbon Week began. If you don't know, it's really a worthy read. DE agent was killed, and his hometown absorbed that, and they started wearing the red ribbons. And from there, it's now recognized nationally. It's a really good story if you haven't read it. But they start off with the history of Red Ribbon, and then each day has a different theme. Each school, they're varied up. One of them that I really liked was they had Jersey Day, and it was done to be proud of who you are, and to wear a jersey, but stay in the game was where that was. Stay drug-free, stay in the game, and that was a really good one. All red on other ones. And then they had the Drug Fact of the Day, where they would teach about current things that are going on and trends, and how to stay away from the drugs and alcohol and whatnot. So it's a very productive week, and of course, we try to take those lessons and continue them throughout the year for it.
So with that, Sergeant, you're saying the red carpet, we have a tradition here. Dr. Materano, I'll read the resolution you'd like to present.
I'm coming over right now.
Okay.
Just, I know we posted some pictures on our website as well, and we brought the red carpet out. Poor Red Ribbon Mama now. Great to see you, wonderful partner. And I think that middle school has a wonderful picture of Deputy Mac Mama there all day.
Okay, all that's there. See that.
So, would you want to read it?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so.
I don't know about that, but. "October 29th, Board of Education for St. Mary's County, National Red Ribbon Week." I practiced that, I do, I promise. Yeah. "Whereas preventing substance abuse and other risk behaviors by school-aged youth remains a priority for St. Mary's County Public Schools. And whereas a key strategy in substance abuse prevention is educating parents, students, and the community at large on substance abuse issues and the resources available in our community to help prevent this high-risk behavior. And whereas the United States Department of Justice and the Drug Enforcement Administration have designated October 23rd, 2013 through October 31st, 2013 to be National Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the ongoing community partnerships with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office to provide drug abuse resistance education, DARE, programming in all middle schools and St. Mary's County Public Schools, and the local activities coordinated to support nationwide efforts for continued awareness through National Red Ribbon Week. Thus, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County declares October 23rd, 2013 through October 31st, 2013 to be National Red Ribbon Week in all St. Mary's County Public Schools. The Board of Education encourages all students and supporting adults to learn what they can do to prevent substance abuse and make a personal commitment to the mission of the Red Ribbon Campaign, striving towards a drug-free America." 29th day of October, 2013.
Thank you, Mike. And board members, let me sort of recapitulate some of the things I already said from the dais with these two fine individuals representing the sheriff's office. We've talked about the involvement of our SROs. But I also want to make this a public announcement that in this current day and age, all those great temptations for our young people as they go through the experimentation and a variety of different issues, that we now more than ever need to raise that awareness because we recognize that a one wrong decision, one wrong experimentation can lead to death. It's very somber words that I display to you from the podium this evening, and that's why we're gathered here this evening. Come on over here closer to me. Why we are gathered here this evening. So I'm going to make it a public announcement this evening that if, once again, if anyone in this community knows of any young person who is struggling, who is experimenting, who is putting their life at risk, making poor choices, communicate with me or any other school system employee, Board of Education members. My website is accessible. My email address is mjmartirano@smcps.org. Phone number, 301-475-5511, extension 32178. Call, communicate, so we can respond. The beauty of our community is we're highly connected. There's not too many things that go on in this community that we don't know about, somebody doesn't know about. But have the courage to communicate that information to our law enforcement individuals in a proactive way. We have an anonymous tip line where information can be communicated. That's right on the homepage of our website, smcps.org. And so as the community that cares, we must make certain that we're taking those courageous steps, being brave and bold to take that extra step, whether it's through an anonymous tip that we can respond to, or through a direct communication with me, or always through our outstanding law enforcement agents. So I wanted to take a more impassioned, direct communication tonight with our community around this topic of our Red Ribbon Week to make it more than the educational activities. But the reality is, we know in recent times the impact of what drugs and alcohol can do to a life if not dealt with properly. And we want all of our young people, as you hear me say every year at graduation, but most of all, we want you to be happy. We want every young person to be able to fulfill their dreams, a life of ambition and contribution, and a life of happiness where they reap the benefits of their life. But a life cut short as a result of poor choices or involvement in drugs or alcohol is something very, very sad when that information comes out. So I appreciate the involvement of all of these individuals here with me as we present this citation and resolution signed by all of you and myself as we carry this back to the Sheriff's Department, and once again, as his representatives echo that continued partnership that we have, the ongoing relationship of collaboration and communication in that sense. And, you know, we always talk about the power of community, a lot of C-words here, community, consensus, collaboration, cooperation, all of those things working together, that the great communication that exists between us has resulted in causing issues of, we've been able to address issues of prevention, causing individuals to avoid issues of concern and harm by responding after the school day, getting tips and having communication where we're able to respond to young people so that they're not causing harm to themselves or to others. All that's going on 24/7, and I just want to raise that awareness of our community. So my final message is, stand up, obviously, with us, shoulder to shoulder. If somebody is involved and needs assistance, reach out. All the individuals here are here to support. And take a statement, make a statement in this community that we're not going to tolerate this kind of drug use in our community because we recognize what that can lead to in community. So on behalf of the Board of Education, on behalf of myself and all of our school system, but more importantly, on behalf of all the 18,000 young people who are in our schools every day, we thank you for the work that you do, and let me present this to you, sir, and thank you for your time with us this evening. Give them a round of applause. You're good. Okay, I always want, see, I never...
I'm going to put in one spot just a moment.
Yeah, okay. All right, very good.
Yes, Mr. Wyatt, just continue.
Yes, sir.
Next is the, what, the National Teen Driver Safety Week.
National Teen Driver Safety Week as well, yes. And as Dr. Materano said, it's important to, I think, take a moment to recognize the good work that goes on every year, every day by these VIPs for us. And part of that is the Young Driver Safety Initiative that we started in 2008. I'm happy to report that thousands of our students have been involved in assemblies, safety festivals, ongoing safe driving contracts, and interactions with our law enforcement officers to bring the message of how important it is to pay attention to what you're doing when we give you that little magic card, I guess, you know, the driver's license. And Dr. Materano will probably add a little bit later that we kind of have sort of our own little golden ticket that we sort of hold in abeyance until they abide by our rules and regulations and our requirements. And with that, I know that Deputy Stone has been involved, very active this past week, in our high schools. So I'll let him speak a little bit of what he's been able to do.
How you doing? I'm Corporal Stone with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office. I've been with the Sheriff's Office since 2005. When I started alcohol enforcement, it made me a part of the traffic safety unit within the agency of St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office. And so I've been a part of the Safe Driving Festival since then. Every year, I've been involved in educating young drivers to drive safer and think about what they're doing when they're behind the wheel. And this past week, they had me come in and speak to each one of the high schools, Grape Mills, Leonard Town, and Chautauqua High School. The discussions that we had were about distracted driving and impaired driving. You know, majority of the kids getting their driver's license are within the high school range. They're, you know, not professional drivers, they're rookie drivers, they're beginning driving, and they're learning how to adapt. With this day and age with technology, the youth have embraced the technology and they use it every single day, just like their parents do as well. So really had to reiterate how important it is to operate a vehicle safely, not use handheld devices, iPods. Don't let their friends distract them because people within vehicles become distracted as well. And showed some PSAs with videos of what can happen with distracted driving, as well as wearing seatbelts, how important it is, how much it could save lives, and also how speed can play a factor for, just in residential neighborhoods as they're driving. I believe it's 40 miles per hour if you're traveling in a residential neighborhood where you should be traveling 15 to 25 miles per hour. If you strike a child at 40 miles per hour, they have an 80% chance, I mean, 20% chance of living. But if they're going the speed limit of 15 to 25 miles per hour, then they have an 80% chance of surviving. So those are statistics, information, videos to help them understand. And there's a lot of emotional students in the crowd. They came up and talked afterwards, you know, expressed their concerns, what they've been through. And so it was great to have the opportunity to do that, and I really appreciate being a part of this.
Good, wonderful.
Thank you.
So, board members, with that, again, another resolution. Board of Education for St. Mary's County, October 29th, 2013, National Teen Driver Safety Week. Whereas one of the most, if not the most significant threat to the safety of our children and young adults today is injury and death caused by traffic collisions involving young drivers. And whereas young driver-involved crashes continue to be a major concern within our community, and motor vehicle crashes are a leading cause of teenage deaths in our nation. And whereas since 2007, the United States Congress has designated the third week in October annually to be designated as National Teen Driver Safety. And whereas it is important to educate parents, students, and the community at large on young driver safety and the resources available in our community to help prevent high-risk driving behaviors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes supporting community partners to include the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office, the Department of Maryland State Police, and the St. Mary's County Highway Safety Program, who have partnered to create the St. Mary's County Public Schools Young Driver Safety Program, promoting safety and education of young drivers and supporting nationwide efforts for continued awareness through National Teen Driver Safety Week. Thus, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County declares that October 23rd, 2013 through October 31st, 2013, to be National Teen Driver Safety Week in all St. Mary's County Public Schools. The Board of Education encourages all young drivers and supporting adults to learn what they can do to improve driving behaviors for themselves and others. 29th day of October, 2013.
Wonderful. So I'll hold this right now. Board members, you know that we talk about our data quite often. And a few years ago, with the leadership of Mike Wyatt, we talked about incentivizing our parking permits in our schools. We recognize the golden ticket that he's referring to, a right of passage for any young person is that day when they get their license. Think about, all of you who have your own children, how important that day is. It's a milestone. It's a right to passage. But as I always say, to whom much is given, much is expected in that sense. And when you think about turning the keys over to a young person who's 16 and recognizes developmentally what's going on with a young person, the invincibility level, and you think about, we give a key to a vehicle that has this high-charged machine that going at a certain velocity can have great impact in terms of death, et cetera. If any of you have ever been to, many, I know, Ms. Allen, you're an emergency room nurse. You've seen many things with a great tragedy where it comes in as a result of a split-second decision in that sense. So our goal has been to tie these things together, recognizing the milestone, the right to passage in terms of the license. But one of the things that we've incentivized is the parking pass. And I want our community to understand how important that parking pass is because it's one thing to be able to drive, it's one thing to be able to drive to school legally in our system, and in order to do that legally with authority, you must have a parking pass. And so instead of just giving them it as an entitlement, we've issued approximately, we have about 3,600, I guess, parking passes out there. Each year, we have every new person who wants a pass has to sit through an education class that raises the awareness of safety. They have to sign a contract that indicates that now that you've been given this privilege, it's a privilege that can be taken away. We remind them, it's not an entitlement. It's a privilege, goes along with a series of responsibilities. We expect outstanding maturity, responsibility, safe driving, defensive driving, all of those things associated with it. Then we will issue the parking pass. But, again, conditional. If we find out, and we have our, obviously through everything being technologically driven, if we discover that there's been a mistake made with your driving, that you violated that contract, we will remove that parking pass from the individual. So it's highly incentivized. It's raised the awareness tremendously as opposed to just putting it out there in terms of a free-for-all that people get, well, I'll just get my license and tomorrow I get my parking pass. And there's a waiting list for some of these, obviously, in some of our schools. Individuals, we have revoked them. But when you have that contract in front of you, you have individuals like this gentleman here going in and raising the awareness, our sheriff representatives. We have click-it-or-ticket going on several times throughout the year, at this time of the year, wearing safety belts, et cetera. We recognize that the technology has advanced in terms of safety of vehicles. But regardless of how safe vehicles are, our young people and all individuals need to continue to practice safe driving because like that, in a split second, something can happen. And I want to tell you just a real quick story. You know, we all have our own aspects of how we drive, and hopefully, we're all driving according to the speed limit, and we're doing what's necessary and being safe drivers and good role models for our community and following the law. But I've found over the years and in recent years of becoming even, already what I define as a defensive driver, but more so now, because as I'm always aware of the other individual, and today, a prime example, driving down Route 5, and I'm watching, actually, St. Andrews Church Road, Route 5 to St. Andrews Church, and I'm watching, and I'm going, no, she's not. No, she's not. Yes, she is, coming right at me. At the last split second, I'm kind of going this way to the right. The individual realizes, and I catch eye contact, and she looked like she was down getting something off the floor. So, and I add that in, if you're, as soon as you start moving with your body when you're driving, the car starts going with you. Other thing that I share with you, obviously, the board members know that I'm an avid bike rider, and I'm a very defensive bike driver, and I'm always watching drivers. And if you watch, when individuals look at something on the road, they start naturally... coming to that situation. So when a child is driving, who doesn't have the years of experience, takes their eyes off the road, and in a split second, you've seen all the public service announcements on TV around texting and the last words that were said, and then it led to the loss of a life. So I'm very pleased, again, with these two things marrying up, our Red Ribbon Week and our Drivers' Safety Festivals, the raising of the awareness. But the message that I want to end with, with all of us together up here symbolically, is that this is just not something that, hooray tonight, that we've raised and we've rung the bell and we've met the criteria of awareness during these particular weeks. This is ongoing. This is your job all the time. We're doing our part in terms of education. And if you've ever, and I know we've all experienced because you've received calls with me, when you receive a call that an accident has occurred and involves a young person, those are my darkest days, to lose a life earlier than what was expected and thinking about all the lost potential that was there. So on behalf of the board, we once again thank you for your involvement in keeping our children safe, and we want to continue to promote this on a very aggressive and regular basis. So again, on behalf of our board, I want to present this to you to carry back to the Sheriff's Department, and thank you for your involvement. Give them a round of applause if you would, again.
[applause]
Thank you. Very good.
Thank you very, very much.
Can we get a picture, sir, if that's okay with the two officers here when you take a break?
Yes. At this time, we will take a 10-minute break.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the public hearing. A public hearing this evening is on policies in D section, policies EDB, EEA, CD, ECF, FEE, and FFB.
Wow, you're talking in code.
Mr. Omeley, have you had the opportunity to review all these policies?
I have.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, has anyone signed up for public hearing?
No one signed up.
Okay, no one has signed up for public hearing, and public hearing is closed. Has anyone signed up for public comment?
No one signed up for public comment.
Thank you very much. Moving along into consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agendas presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. There are no action items this evening, so we'll move right into information items. The first information item is the instructional technology update. Mrs. Greeley and Ms. Jennifer Consalvo, nice to see you all tonight.
Good evening, Dr. Marderano and board members. Jennifer and I are here to talk about instructional technology, but most especially to talk about our STEM for All iPad grant, and I think you will be very excited for what she has to present. But first, I'd like to make a few connections. Tonight, you've heard about October and Red Ribbon Week, Drug Awareness Week, and the fact that driver safety is very important. But October is also Computer Learning or Computer Safety Month. And as a part of that, we concentrate in St. Mary's County Public Schools on computer safety and digital awareness of what students should and should not do. Our program was based upon doctor, when Dr. Marderano introduced the Clix program through the Attorney General's Office, and it began in 2010, and our media specialists promote the program. Regardless of age, K through 12 grades, rather, excuse me, the media program targets staying safe and bullying prevention. In terms, very simple terms, we emphasize the importance of keeping passwords secure, not talking to strangers online, not sharing personal information online, not clicking on pop-ups online, not answering mean or hurtful email. We always discuss the consequences involved with each. But what you see on this slide are the digital citizenship themes. If you turn behind me, you see we have referenced in our posters, essential 21st century classroom learners, as well as the skills involved, which are reflected in digital citizenship These nine themes are what students will be exposed to throughout their 12 years or 13 years of education in St. Mary's County Public Schools. But of these nine themes, we can link them together to represent respecting yourself, educating yourself, and protecting yourself. Digital etiquette, digital access, and digital law all relate to respecting yourself and respecting others, being responsible for your actions. Under educate yourself, we could connect digital communication, digital literacy, and digital commerce, realizing that electronic communication is impacting what we buy and what we sell. Protecting yourself or protecting others are the themes of digital rights and responsibilities, digital security, as well as digital health and wellness. Think about that last theme, digital health and wellness, how important now the internet has become to so many people to help them make decisions about whether or not to visit a doctor. Sometimes it can exacerbate the situation, however, it will promote people finding out about their own personal health. But beyond these digital themes and digital citizenships, you've seen the impact of technology integration in our schools over the past three or four years. With the integration of web tools and interactive technologies, you've seen the Moodle integration, you've seen response pads, you've seen students utilizing the interactive whiteboards, and so on. But the U.S. Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, said today's elementary school students will be completing college around 2030, 2030. I can't imagine 2030 myself. Their careers will take them deep into the second half of the 21st century. It's a good bet that the economy they enter will rely even more on knowledge and technology than ours does today. Our schools must prepare students for the future, and we had better get it right. Their preparedness will decide our economic strength as a country. And as I see those little children saluting, it makes me think where they will be in the middle half of the century. So as we prepare our students to be college and career-ready, we focus on how to teach students to deal with this information-saturated world. We focus on the why and the when, and the how information is used as synthesis, creation, and collaboration. So with that, I'm bringing Jen Consalvo up to talk about our newest initiative.
Very good, Gina.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Marderano, and board members for having me tonight. We were lucky enough to receive a very large grant from the DoD back in the fall of 2012 last year that focused on project-based learning and technology and really stemmed for all students throughout the entire county. And then I was honored to come on board with this in January of this year. So I've been working on it since then. And the main goal of this grant that Dr. Ridgell played a large part in writing was to implement rigorous inquiry-based, real-world research problems. And with that, we began in the winter-spring, we had 33 pilot teachers participate, and we had one or more from every single school in the county that participated in that. And the first thing we did, we always kept the instructional focus and we enhanced the curriculum. We enriched fourth marking period lessons from the current science units with making the other content connections, because that's very important with the STEM for All. They implemented these lessons that incorporated Moodle, which is a content management system, and the iPads in the classroom. And we gained feedback from those teachers and continued writing more curriculum over the summer, where it is a full implementation for grades 3 through 8, and then biology and chemistry. Kindergarten through 2nd will be piloting this year, they're actually going to start in November. When we implemented the new activities in May of 2013, we had tremendous success, the students loved the engagement, the iPads, the teachers were excited to use them, and it's really just hit the ground running. I feel like we just haven't really stopped, and we're just going to keep on going with creating the lessons and then implementing them. A little bit of what we've done, all iPads have been distributed. We had 2,035 that were purchased and distributed in carts to all the schools. Professional development, we had site-based and county-based. Those pilot teachers were a key role in the professional development as far as training them and then taking it back to their site. Any customized professional development that's been needed by e-coaches, myself going out there, we've had Apple representatives come on Fair Day to help train as well. And we have ongoing iPad basics and professional development classes going on now. There's actually some CPD coursework going on that uses Moodle, iPads, and other technologies.
Jen, I'm sorry to...
That's okay.
You're on a roll there. How many iPads out right now currently?
2,030, 30.
Okay, 2,030. Member, board members, the total grant was 2.5 million. So without this infusion of dollars through this grant, that Charles was the, Dr. Ridgell was the lead individual on writing that with a lot of input from others, has really advanced our technology initiative to moving to that one-to-one computing piece of it. And you're, what you're really defining to our board members is the role that you've played in this, is the great need for professional development, because we don't want to put these tools out there. There's great conversation about the digital conversion, all the literature's talking about this, but the major component of that is that we must have the professional development in, because it's got to be utilized to its fullest.
Right.
Because we recognize people are on a continuum, on that digital continuum, or whatever continuum you want to call it. Some who can't navigate, don't know the basic operation functions, others who are very comfortable, and then taking it further with additional applications and things such as that. So the major piece in this is that PD, and I know that Ms. Loughlin is here, and she's been a major advocate of that training piece for our teachers, the challenge and support model, providing that challenge and providing that support. So continue, but I want, don't gloss over what were, the amount of money that we received, and don't gloss over the amount of actual tools that that's translated to. So well over 2,000 devices as a result of this very ambitious activity that we engaged in for that grant writing that yielded this result.
And we actually have 400 and...
80 more that are put in the classrooms.
Keep singing to me, keep singing. I mean, we want, I mean, that's the whole thing. And board members, you know, you've already just heard me say, the digital conversion, the one-to-one computing, some updates that I provided you along the way with our leasing program, keeping things fresh in front of children. Where's my good friend, my new best friend Barrett? He's back there in the corner, I know he's liking that title that I've given him. Get to know Barrett, because he is what I would call a native, correct? You grew up with the technology, you understand all of this, he's so proficient in it. He said to me, we are, the future is now, we're living in the future. If you just think about the transformation that has occurred over the last several years and where we've gone, and then I've talked to you about the iTunes U and the online textbooks and building our own courses online, what this is going to look like. So as you were talking about those babies up there, so let's go a step further. Add 12 on to 2013, and, let's go, add 12 on to 2014, that's 2026. That's when those young people are going to graduate. So keep in mind, the class of 2026 are our kindergartners right now. Think back the last 12, 13 years, and where were you and what were you using, what device? Think about what levels were our young people, that we have to prepare for a future that we don't know what it's going to look like. And yet we are trying to equip them with solving problems through all this. This is critical information that you're going, I'm sorry, I'm taking your thunder.
No, you're fine, that's...
Yeah, good, thank you.
I couldn't...
We're science teachers like that.
Yes, you're doing great.
Thank you, continue.
So like Dr. Marderano said, professional development, ongoing curriculum development, you know, I jump at the chance and tell all the teachers, anytime they need help, let me know. I was down in Carver today, working with 3rd grade, and the kids are just, they just can't even find the words to say how excited they are with the iPad. So I try to get in there as much as I can and help them, and just guide the teachers, and the students are so excited, they'll teach you a few things, I'm sure, before you realize it. But another key part to our grant is the evaluation piece, and Mrs. Denise Raely is actually the grant observer, so we're working on pulling data with her and making sure we have all of our ducks in a row for the grant, and she gets to go into classrooms as well and see the iPads and actions and the problem-based learning and the inquiry, and she's just loving it too. I mean, it's just, it's going fabulous. I absolutely loved working with this and just getting that STEM for All into all the classes.
STEM for All.
With that, I would like you to just experience the joy. We have a five-minute video of the iPads and that in action, so let's see.
Thanks, Ms. Mary Ann Littleman, Center for...
Yes.
As you come out of that video and you're getting it up, can you give the board a sense of how schools were selected to for this and what schools we have this in? Is it all, none, or all or some?
This grant is actually in all schools except for, there were two elementary schools, Dynard and Mechanicsville, that did not qualify with the enough military-connected students in there.
Exactly, that was a part of it.
So those are the only two. But other than those two, this grant is fully into every single school. Like I said, 3 through 8, we have, we're building a lesson, at the minimum right now is one unit per marking period that has the use of the Moodle and the iPads, and they're so excited with that, they're like, when's the next one coming, when's the next one coming? So we just keep on building that and making many options for them.
Hit the video, come out of the video and tell them what you just said, what's Moodle? We want to make sure people know those terms, but hit the video.
Okay, do you want to do Moodle now?
No, no, hit that, go ahead, play it, and come out of it with that comment.
Science, Technology, and Information Technology, both standards are core parts of education in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Teachers are preparing students to be college and early-ready, seeking ways to engage students and promote active learning for 21st-century methods. Technology integration allows students to problem-solve and find solutions through analysis, synthesis, and collaboration. One form of technology integration engaging students and staff is the iPad.
iPads, I've been lucky enough to be on the pilot team that implemented last year. Saw huge participation among the kids in the group that I had last year and this year. They're engaged, they're on task, they're excited about whatever it is they're learning. And they remember it, they carry it over. I ran into a kid over the summer, and they were talking about the iPads and what they learned and how they're reading about it. So just the carryover and the engagement piece has been phenomenal.
Students are being engaged and challenged, needing their background knowledge and new phone knowledge to navigate the iPads.
I really like using them. My parents have an iPad at home, so I know how to use them. But I think it's really cool because we get to use advanced touchscreen technology when we're only in 5th grade. I like researching on the internet. And then we do have some other apps on there that help us with our multiplication and division and stuff. And some of it, it's actually quite fun, it's challenging.
Internet research and useful apps have grabbed the attention of students, allowing them to move away from the paper and fill in the gaps of the void.
You can use one iPad for the entire group, and it's better because then that makes everyone have all the information.
Just like looking up stuff from Google and finding people, articles and resources that you can use to say, uh...
The information highway is now students' fingertips. Students have been able to focus on questioning, research, and communication skills to meet their immediate informational needs.
Yeah, I kind of do, they're basically a tactic of engaging the student, allowing them to have something that they're doing with their hands, not just looking up at the board, which of course, you know, stimulates them intellectually as well, just being able to touch it and hold it, and making it a real iPad. I just love that it's right there, at their seat.
Not only are the iPads extremely accessible, but also the mobility allows students to take the portable technology out of the classroom and into the field. Out in the field, students are extending their knowledge by having vast amounts of information and useful tools on the go.
It helps us become more portable, it allows us to go out into the field more, and that in turn gives us more hands-on experience.
STEM supports real-world research projects that will lead to more hands-on learning with the advent of technology.
I really like the photo of the app, it's just taking pictures, like what we did in the field out there, we get to take pictures of all the activities we do.
It's a really good hands-on tool.
It's a really good hands-on tool. I really like it because it's really easy to use and really quick.
Oh, I've had them learning much more interactive and it's a big challenge to keep students engaged right now with a lot of, you know, repetitive paper activities. So it's always been a challenge to use a field, traditional field notebook, even though that's kind of a requirement for the field. A lot of folks are going to interactive field book, the interactive data recording platform, which is what we're using right now. And so we're really trying to incorporate it into everything we do.
The STEM for all iPads have provided staff with projects that are aligned to the Common Core standards. Interdisciplinary units are designed to have students investigate and solve problems or create solutions, read informational and technical text, collaborate with their peers, and develop a deeper understanding of the concept.
I think it helps engage students, kids that are excited about the curriculum, that's something different, something a different way for students to show their work and kind of a new way for them to perform or show a performance assessment. They kind of use their work, use the iPads to kind of create things digitally instead of just the paper pencil type activities. So it definitely gives a different tool for teachers to use to implement the curriculum.
Students are finding that they can work at their own pace and can expand their knowledge of advanced technology with the iPads.
It's just a lot easier to maneuver with because the different like shortcuts you can get through, like double clicking the home button, you can pass between two apps easily. So it's easier to keep track of what you're doing.
And it makes things more electronic, you can go learn face with it instead of just have your iPad in the board and saying that's bringing students.
St. Mary's County Public School supports STEM for all and are pressing forward with their students, providing them experiences and information that will help guide their way through a highly technological world. As with other technologies, the iPads engaging students allow you to work at your own pace and to develop 21st century skills that will graduate students who are college and career-ready.
That was very good.
Thank you.
That was very good.
Thank you very much.
Mary Ann pulled that together, right? That's your voice in the background, correct?
Yes, that is my voice in the background and I worked with Mary Ann and her team.
That was very comprehensive. We want that on the website as soon as possible.
And I want to thank Mary Ann Williams for doing a wonderful job. She's in the background all the time, but she really makes us look good.
Did you hear that, Mary Ann? She knocked. Get back to taping.
The voice from behind the door.
Yes. Yep, so that's where we are with the STEM for all iPad initiative. It's going great and I'm excited to see where it's going to go from here.
And if I could just say, don't forget that we have a one-to-one iPad initiative in our GIS program.
Right.
That we are, as we revert to the cows, the computers on wheels that can be rolled around, that we are actually impacting education at the time it needs to be impacted, which this technology absolutely reinforces that philosophy too. So we would like to invite you into the classrooms to see, you can contact Jen if you want to know when there's an activity going on. All of the teachers that were involved in that video are very interconnected with the iPad integration, so let us, let us cheer.
They have their own iPads, they're great models. They like to model behavior so we can bring them along and ask them to show and learn as well.
Yep, and there's more than just those four that I contacted. There were plenty of choices of really great instruction going on with those iPads in the classrooms. So anytime you'd like to, let me know and we can go.
Love those cases that they were carrying. I've seen those before, the ones for the outdoor around their neck. I mean, you think about the safety and dropping and all that, that sense was excellent.
Yes, okay.
Okay, board members, comments, questions? Mrs. Allen?
I really appreciated this. Recently came back, all of us did, from the school board conference that the state puts on, state association puts on every year. And I took the time to go to two presentations that Apple did, one of which was iPads in the classroom as a teaching tool. And they actually had us go through several exercises and the creativity that it fosters and there's just such a wide open field that there was just constant conversation going on. You could tell the excitement in the room amongst the adults that were in there was just over the top. It was really a great piece. So I was really pleased to see this on the agenda for this evening because it gave me an opportunity to then take that knowledge and see where we are with what we're offering. You mentioned that we have two schools that did not qualify for the grant and that gives me great concern. So how are we addressing those two schools?
We have iPads in there that we are, excuse me, sorry.
We have put iPads in the Dinerd and Mechanicsville, so they have the opportunity to interface with them. Every school in our county has at least one. It was all based upon the size, the number of teachers. So, you know, one, Mechanicsville, a small school, will have one where larger schools have many. But every school now has been touched. We made that promise last year and we have fulfilled that promise and the iPads are in there.
So if you remember, let's stay at the higher altitude for a moment, when we talked about the grant, the real specificity of how we got the grant, why we got the grant, and the purpose of the grant. So there's the evaluator, Ms. Rayly is doing that workforce, we're delighted to have her back with us too, you know, in the sense of the work she's doing. But it was for a very precise level, STEM for all, project-based learning, schools that had the population of the military students, that was our main criteria, I think, that really set us apart, is a third of our population is associated with the military. And so had to reach a certain threshold of percentage. I asked that question potentially knowing that you would ask that question quite frankly and we would swing back around and provide the answer. Those schools, we've gone in through our technology resources and equalized that.
Right.
So that there's not two schools just sitting out there that didn't qualify because of the grant. We supplemented that with our dollars through the operating budget to do that.
In medicine, we used to talk about see one, do one, teach one. And it was, you know, you can show me once and the next time you're going to have me do this and the time after that, I'm going to teach someone else to do that. And it really helped to drive that knowledge home and make it something that wasn't just rote memorization, but was something that you put into practice and you carried that through and it was always yours. And that's one of the reasons I'm so excited about project-based learning because I truly believe that it is through project-based learning that our students aren't just learning things by rote, but understanding the mechanism behind it and being able to apply that in other places. And that for me is the critical issue. So thank you because I know that, that as expected, the adults, the teachers in the system have varying comfort levels with these tools. I'm very glad that you're there to support and it won't take long before they'll be as agile as the kids with utilizing it. But it is, it is a crucial piece, that professional development. So thank you for bringing that forward and for sharing this.
If I can just interject, I was like, we were both looking at each other laughing when you said that the adults that were involved in your Apple discussions. Jen and I have had five Apple basic trainings for teachers who had never really used the iPad before. And the first night I said, oh, let's just let everybody in who really wanted to get in on that first night because the night worked out for them. So it was like 34 people, teachers, and it got a little loud and I was laughing because, you know, we had said an hour and a half, we didn't want to keep them long, we wanted to keep them, and Jen kept talking a little louder and a little louder. But as we've gone through the five nights, we like our feedback from, you know, that they've made a connection and they feel more comfortable now as they integrate the science unit into their classroom.
Absolutely.
Quickly define Moodle for them, you introduced that term to them.
Moodle is a content management system. It's almost like a living, breathing textbook. All the resources for that particular unit go in there and it's at the student's fingertips on a computer or an iPad and they can respond to peers, upload work, view PowerPoints. And then if they have a computer at home, they can log on at home and share what they're doing, their parents and feedback grades. It's a great tool to use.
It's a way to lead into a paperless classroom, essentially. If we had one-to-one devices, we could have a paperless classroom.
When we have one-to-one.
When we have one-to-one. And it's funny you say that. My daughter, who is a senior in college, was looking over my shoulders, I was doing some work online on the, on the school system website and I, she was looking and she went, wait a minute, when did you guys start using Moodle? You had to wait till I left? And it is something that they use in colleges across the country. So it's, you know, it is, it is the wave of the future and so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Watson?
Thank you for this wonderful presentation and it's good to know that all our students in St. Mary's County Public Schools are touched and use this iPad technology and the teachers are overwhelmingly embracing the professional development. So all of that is good news that we are moving forward with these 21st century skills. I think it's marvelous what you are doing, the teachers are doing, and the students are doing. So thank you very much.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you guys very much. It's exciting, it's very new to us and I guess it's new to everybody else. I would like you to elaborate a little bit more on Mechanicsville and Dinerd. You mentioned something like you have one there.
Yeah, she's, when you said one, a cart of thirty.
A cart of thirty.
And that's, I was like, I was like, one? Really?
I'm sorry, a cart of thirty.
Oh, that, I feel much better now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for clarifying that, yes.
Perfect, great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's very important to make that point and emphasize that, that the children at Dinerd and Mechanicsville Elementary School have access to the iPads just like all the other children do in the other schools. That there is a cart there and there are 30 iPads that are being distributed and the children are receiving instruction and are working with this. It's very important to say that.
Absolutely.
We can't just say one, okay?
Yes.
Because then people are wondering, you know, what's going on. So anyway, good, I'm glad we got that straight because I was thinking about the same thing and as you could see, the board members are thinking the same way. But thank you very much for clarifying that. Sorry, Mr. Matthews.
No, I'm good, thank you.
What am I, Miss?
Mrs. Crosby?
Yes, you did do a good job and I do have a, what I would consider to be an ignorant question, but I'm going to ask it anyway after I say something that's not accurate. My granddaughter has to go over to Lexington Park every day for STEM. They allow her to bring her Kindle, which is great. Now, are children allowed, or we don't want to probably take the responsibility for iPads for what might ever happen, what could happen to them, is that correct?
We allow students to bring their own devices. In our handbook, our student handbook, it referenced that with permission, students can bring their own devices, but they are responsible for their devices.
There's the word.
But yes, we're encouraging one, you know, bring your own devices because, thank goodness, the infrastructure, Jim has built up our infrastructure for Wi-Fi, so we have the access So why should we stop such a glorious thing? And actually, I was at an instructional technology meeting this week and that is actually one of the biggest discussions about how can we go to one-to-one computing? It's going to be bring your own devices.
And that's a piece, but we'll be bringing to this board too, you know that I got to keep this hat on, a policy for usage because we kind of opened up a door here and that's where, you know, we were talking about continuous improvement. What we've said a few years ago has now shifted that we've got to respond to and if we want to truly advance this, this is not, so board members, let me, let me explain this at this level. Gone are the days when we're going to give every child the same thing at the same time. Like, you know, we would say, everybody gets a textbook and everybody has the same thing. I've referred to it as a spiky implementation and I've had to accept that we've got Promethean boards going here, they're being staggered as they come in here, we've got one-to-one computing here, we've got cows, we've got all kinds of things that are happening and things are moving. But not every school has the same devices or the same things, but we're allowing now for the devices to come in. I'm going to have to come back to you as policy setters for the, for our county school system around the usage because you get into then control of filters and sites of visitation. But we had a major milestone, I think it was the year before last, where we asked for reading over the holidays and reading over the summer and a parent said, oh, I've got a Kindle, you know, I've got the first version of it, I want to bring that, download that book onto my child's, we had a great conversation and yes. You talk about the glorious reform in that sense, that's going to get us there, so it's going to be a combination of bring your own device, supplement it with school system devices, using leasing agreements to keep up with the latest ones, applying for the grants, keep advancing them. Because my concern is, and Dr. Rasper, you and I've had this conversation based upon your son's involvement in this arena, that there, I envision that there is somewhere out there a big warehouse and we're at step one, so that whatever version we're at, I think there's probably 25 other versions waiting on the shelf. And as those keep coming, they get either smaller or more compact, more powerful, different ways to do it. The challenge for us is keeping those things in front of our kids to keep them relevant so that they're not at a disadvantage of other peers across the nation and internationally. So I'm thrilled with our approach right now, but there's got to be a level of, gone are the discussions that probably occurred here about the aspect of equal and equity. Equal and equity take on a whole different meaning now as we roll this out with the spiky implementation. So it's good stuff and I'm looking forward to bringing that other policy forward too.
Now for my not-so-intelligent question. I think that other one was good. Okay, I have three iPads. One was, it's a board iPad, we all have one, okay? And it's great because it has our board calendar on it. Mrs. Bowden can confirm. Now, then I bought my husband an iPad when they first came out for his birthday and he just, I never can use that one because it's always on his lap, always. Now, I went out and bought my granddaughter an iPad and her mother wouldn't let her have it, she thought I was spoiling her. So I took it. Now, it's got one of those, it's got a hotspot, I could use it anywhere probably in the world. Now, my question is, when I go on my mail, you know how on your computer you can get rid of a whole mess of emails at once? How do you do that on the iPad?
I can show you.
I'll show you.
You can? Good, because I am so tired of doing it one at a time.
Nope, I can show you after. Anytime, board members.
Hit the, hit the add a button, there's a whole way to do it.
Yes, I knew there had to be some way, but thank you so much.
No problem.
That would make me much happier to clean these things up.
Good, we'll get you tonight.
Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Crosby.
Thank you.
This is great news. In fact, it's better than great news, Dr. Marana.
It's wonderful.
And, and the thing that is really astonishing that all students in all our schools have access to all this. And that's what's really phenomenal. And I'll just go and say how sweet it is.
It's been a while.
And that St. Mary's County Public School system is moving along beautifully. We're in the technology age, we are involved as much as we possibly can because all this takes money, there's no question about it, but we are finding the money and the staff's chasing it. And thank you to Dr. Ridgell and other staff members, including yourselves, working with this to make it all work and of course, the teachers in the classroom who have to utilize it and do the instructional, instructional part. Maybe one day when I retire completely, I'll ask the superintendent for a job to teach science so I can get back in the work.
It's time to get back in there.
Technology stuff.
That's wonderful, you're master at that. Good?
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate, thank you most especially to Dr. Ridgell for finding the grant, pleading the grant. I mean, it was one night. Yes. Thank you, one night.
Now, just, let's go back a little bit, this is exciting. I know we're trying to hit that gavel there real quickly, I know. But my challenge needs to be your challenge, which is staying up now with the innovations because we are innovating for success. That's our theme this year, innovating for student learning. Our day of innovation was our PD day that we had on Fair Day and all the results of that. But these can't be static events and you know this, I'm speaking to the choir, they can't be static devices. What are the latest, how do we discover the latest apps? Because there's so many out there, the ones that are relevant. And I just think about loading on the app for the QR reader, which is the, you know, the computer display, the bar graph, basically the barcode. And how Katie McCarthy, or she's married, she's got a different name now, from over at Esperanza, doing the Hunger Games, created a in-school scavenger hunt around a series of questions to keep the excitement and the engagement. And I went around with these young people as we did this and they were running through the halls legitimately, I mean, they were on an instructional thing and I was trying to keep up with them. I mean, they were on an instructional thing and I was trying to keep up with them. But they would reveal a question, they would have to go find out where it was. A QR code was on the wall, they would hold their phone device up, it would read it and the answer would emerge. See the level of engagement, curiosity, imagination, engagement? They're running, literally, legitimately, to the next question to get the answer. And I remember the teacher saying, uh, very, very comfortably, recognizing not every child had a device, we didn't have the device to do it, who has a phone to do this? Allow it for legitimate purposes and then using that device for learning. So, when, say your, your quote again about your emergency room training year three.
It was, uh, see one, do one, teach one.
Okay, so, in our world, in terms of education, the best way to retain a skill and to learn a skill is to teach a skill. So, at the highest, highest level of the cone of learning, if you follow that, is the, the level of thorough understanding to commit it. It's one to do, to recite, to do whatever through learning, is to teach. It's the highest level. So, then when we're doing cooperative learning groups and we're doing a differentiated classroom, we have young people and we'll get occasion, well, the, the students are teaching the class, yeah. Because that's an accelerated skill that allows them to have a different level of retention working with their peers. So, all this wonderful, creative, uh, 21st century classroom learning is happening during this great level of reform and I'm absolutely invigorated by it. So, go back to my best friend in the corner, Barrett, who says, the future is now, we're living in the future. It is true. We are living in the future of things that we said when this comes to fruition. And going back to Dr. Rasp's comment with his, uh, son, you know, who lives in this world, um, there's some things out there that we just don't even understand what's coming our way and be prepared for that and being open to it. Uh, so when we talk about, um, I've talked to Anna Loflin about this. I mean, there was a period of time we were preparing for the 21st century, everybody said, we're getting ready for the 21st century. Well, we were in the 21st century, the 21st century is now in the teenage years. And if, if, it's basically malpractice if anybody who's an educator says, I can't turn on my machine. You know, that used to be the thing. And now I've said, you know, we're learning from our kids. Well, we want to say that we're modeling for our kids and we're leading the way for our kids as well. They're going to teach us, but we're also going to make sure we're teaching them.
They already are.
Back to you, sir.
Just go down and buy yourself a brand-new car. The manuals of this thing, you have to take a class, all right? Because of all the electronics in the vehicle. My wife drives a vehicle, I don't even know how it's running because, you know, to understand what this car does, I have no idea and neither does Shane. But it's all this technology, you have to stay up on it.
Scratch that, Mary Ann.
Hey, I'll get beat off for the next week.
I think the most important thing is though that 21st century skills are in any career. It doesn't matter what path you follow, you are going to interface with technology. So, whether you go to college and become an engineer or a scientist or an astronaut or a nurse, a doctor, all the wonderful things. But also going down the career pathway, that we're actually providing students that access to those pathways, um, they're going to interface with technology just as you have and, and learn and teach facility.
If you go, last week, uh, I was at a dealership and somebody was wondering how things run and, and the salesman in the showroom was trying to explain something and could not get it through to the prospective buyer of the car. And there was a, a young lady there, she, a student, I know she must have been the ninth or 10th grader and she says, oh, I know how this works, I'll show you how it works. And she just got in there, got on a screen, they brought the screener and she's with her finger just moving things around and, and got the automobile to actually start functioning. So, that tells you something.
We just had car safety, driver's safety.
Exactly.
Children, children are learning.
Did she apply for a parking permit?
They understand this technology as it's coming, they're living with this, like we say, they're living it now. We are in it, not next week or next year, five years.
That's true.
And that's correct, it is now. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
No, thank you again.
Future board meetings, the next regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, November the 13th, 2013, at nine AM in this room, and this meeting is adjourned.